Okay, I'm calling the meeting of the Westchester County Planning Board to order for the month of August. Everybody? Thank you. I want to welcome Parks and Recreation for -- and thank them for putting us up here. I'm sure it was a recollection for a lot of us coming here from a long time ago, maybe recently, but it is a beautiful, beautiful facility.
Kathy's right there.
Yes, hi. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sure. Should I even go here now?
Yes, please.
Okay, do we?
It's not actually going to be recorded, it's for the recording.
Got it. So it's -- I don't have to do anything. Okay, good morning, everybody, and welcome to Playland Park. This is one of our super iconic facilities. Peter will go with -- Peter Tartaglia is handing out our little brochure, and it's so interesting with all super IT everything these days, people still love and ask for that piece of paper because -- that little pamphlet because it literally, in a nutshell, if you open it and look at it -- and then you have to put it down, and you have to listen to me.[83.15][83.15][laughter] This is a teaching moment. It literally has everything you ever needed to know about Westchester County parks. Our parks, our addresses, and -- thank you -- and what we have at each facility. So, in a nutshell, it's right there, and we've also found that senior citizens, and we do a tremendous amount of work with the older population, who either don't have computers, couldn't care less, aren't on their phones, they live by this. They keep it in their cars and they find out where they're going from it. So, welcome, the people that are coming in now, too. I'm Kathy O'Connor, I'm the Commissioner of the County Parks Department. Peter Tartaglia is the Deputy Commissioner, working with me. I will give you a quick overview of the park system, and then Peter will give you some specifics about Playland. The ICE Casino, which we're in, and just sidebar, this is a facility that, through the previous administration, it went to a public-private partnership. We do not run this facility now. American ICE does, which is why there's no air conditioning in here. No, I'm kidding.[148.56][148.56][laughter] The facilities are 90 years old, so we'll go into that at the end. And then, at the conclusion of the entire meeting, anybody that would like to go on a tour before it's 115 out, we'd love to show you. We love doing show and tell because we're very proud of what we have. For those of you that are not familiar with the county park system, we have 50 facilities. We're responsible for 50 facilities, 18,000 acres. We are 3% of the total budget. We're about a $47 million operation out of a almost $2 billion operation. What we're very proud of, and we use this in our budget presentation all the time, is that unlike any other parks and recreation agency in the country, we produce close to 70 -- about 72% of our operating budget through revenues and our fee structure. The average is closer to 30. So we're more than double what the rest of the world does, and we're very proud of that. So as I said, we're literally 3% of the total budget. We get about 3 million visitors a year, and those are real numbers, it's not a rec math number, through all our calculations, and we do keep records of who's coming where, obviously, especially to here, our beaches and pools, et cetera. So we work with about 3 million wonderful patrons that come to our facilities. Included in our facilities, if you don't know, we have beaches, we have pools, we have golf courses, we have a working farm up at Muscoot, up in Somers. We have an arboretum, which is Lazden Park, and we now have a glass house up there that at some point in time, we should certainly go and do a meeting up there. It's a whole 'nother world from everything that we deal from White Plains South. We have numerous parks, we have six nature centers. Oh, great, I'm sorry, I didn't even realize it was up there. We have Playland Amusement Park, no other government facility or government agency in the country runs an amusement park, and we have the County Center, which is our most famous arena in Westchester County. It's the only arena in Westchester County. We also have a sleepaway camp, also the only sleepaway camp in Westchester County up at Mountain Lakes, which is Camp Morty, and that's a wonderful story of -- I actually started running the camps in 1980. Then they kind of died down for different reasons, and then 11 years ago, through DSS and the Westchester Parks Foundation, which was the Friends of Parks, it's the not-for-profit association that's associated with the Parks Department, collaboratively, we put together, we got the money, and DSS got the money, and we had a capital project under Andy Spano, and we rebuilt Camp Spruce, which was the music and arts camp, Aaron Copeland Music Camp, lots of names, and it's now Camp Morty after Morty Hyman, who was the camp supervisor for a million years throughout Westchester County. So, it's ending this week. We will have close to 500 children. It's the largest that we've ever had, and the real key part of this is, these are children that are in the foster system. It's not the people that just -- certainly nobody from Rye or any of the other facilities. They have to be in the parks, they're in the DSS system, adopted or foster children or in homeless shelters. And what we have found there, which so many around the table would understand, when you give a child three good meals, the food is unbelievable. It's from farm to table, which we teach them what it's like to not go to McDonald's. Three good meals, love, attention, activity, all of the above, they really have a great time. And the killer is that a lot of them don't want to go home, and it breaks your heart. But anyway, so we're building on that, it's worked out beautifully, it's one of our real home runs. And Kevin Maguire and his people have been wonderful, mental -- community mental health provide us with -- we need psychiatric help up there, too. The children have issues, so -- as well as medical issues. But anyway, that's a wonderful scenario. When that camp closes, that facility, and again, we'll try to get you up there, because I could talk for days about it, until you see it, no one believes that we're still in Westchester County. It really looks like we're in the Adirondacks or Catskills, and we're still about 40 minutes from here, not even. Mountain Lakes is 1,100 acres, and we rent it out on the off-time, on the shoulder seasons away from the camp. And then we have Croton Point Park, which is an RV site, as well as a campsite, as well as a tent camping, as well as picnicking, and obviously swimming in the Hudson. So, we have a tremendous breadth and width of what we are responsible for, and I have to tell you, one of the best things that we can do is what we're doing today, but what I have scheduled shortly is legislators, especially the new county legislators, want to see what we have. And again, Peter and I could talk for days about it, when you see it, and I did it two years ago with five legislators, it was very interesting, they were all in my car, so they had to listen to me.[489.03][489.03][laughter] But it was really, really cool, and I'm always so proud of our staff, because they don't do it just because I'm there. It wasn't just because it was show and tell. Our staff, for the most part, truly love what they do. They're not rich, they work hard, they work long hours, most of them are outside, County Center's the only -- ICE is the only air-conditioned area in the summertime, and it is -- it's tough stuff. And we have public that, you know, sometimes, no matter what we do, they're not happy, and we spend a tremendous amount of time and energy and money in training, customer service. We always say, if the people don't come to our facilities, you're not going to have a job. So, don't put customer service in the back end of the employee manual, it should be front and center. And I work, we work, all weekends, nights, whatever, especially over the summertime. And I do it on purpose, because I want to see myself, what's going on. And over this weekend, we shut down facilities, we just simply couldn't handle anymore, we shut them, we opened them, we shut them, it was unbelievable. At Saxon Woods, at Tibbettsburg Park, Glen Island looked like Playland. Glen Island Beach has not looked like that in years and years, but again, we've put a lot of time and energy into it. The place is beautiful, and people love it down county. So the people really do take it to heart. We do a program called PIP, it's a performance-based program, and it's been -- we've been doing it for over 15 years. And what's really cool for Peter and myself is that the staff still cares about their mark. One of our staff goes out, he's objective, he has a list of what he looks at, you know, at first it was, oh, the rat is here, and you know, he's a -- we got away from that, pretty much, because it is what it is, he's fair, he's objective, but we then bring that crew in, and it's to help them, not to embarrass them, unless they truly have not done what we've asked them to do. But the fact that they still care about what their grade is, is amazing to me, and it's why we keep doing it. When the Commissioner left and I took over, everybody said, are we still going to do that? Are you kidding? Of course we are, we're not changing it. So, that's one of our great things. About our staff, we went through, and I know you've heard a lot of this already, but for the new people, a little bit of our tale of woe, and it's not to complain, it's life. In 2010, as you all know, or most of you know, there was a tremendous buyout through the state, and people that you didn't think were going to leave, left, because financially it was way better for them to leave and then get something else, and have their pension, et cetera, et cetera. So, we lost over -- since 2010, we've lost over 100 full-time people. We're at 234 full-time. That is quite a bit less than what we ever worked with, and the previous Commissioner had three deputies under him. I have wonderful Peter, who does the work of 10, but it's still just Peter. So, that's been a little bit of a challenge for us. The other side of that is that we lost a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge, and you can't put a price on that for the simple reason that it, again, no matter how good we are in training and whatever, when you come in and you were cutting the grass at Macy Field, you were in charge of the weed whacking, cutting, now you're in charge of the park, because you're the last man standing. It's tough to make up for those years of just experience in following somebody that really knows what they're doing. So, again, we've done a lot of training, we do a program called PRC Boot Camp, I love it. We do it through -- all our professional training is paid for by the Parks Foundation, thank God, because in our operating budgets, there's nothing for professional development, or if I want to send somebody to a program or to a conference, it's either out of pocket or now Parks Foundation. So PRC Boot Camp, in a nutshell, is a four-day intensive training. We pick 2025 staff, and we bring them to Mountain Lakes, and we sequester them, and it's unbelievable, because we start out with faces, why am I here, I should be here, you know, that kind of thing. And after four days of a lot of intense stuff and cool stuff, they don't want to go. Oh, can we stay till Friday, you know, kind of thing. So, we're scheduling to do that again, we have a lot of new people that are filling some of the holes, and we're very excited about that. I don't know where -- yeah, no, this is me, I think it's over there. So in conclusion, because I'll turn it over to Peter, as I said, we have, you know, about 234 people full-time, we hire close to 1,200 seasonal people, we have a lot of hourlies doing full-time people work, which sometimes is a challenge. They don't quite have the same experience, they don't have the same vested interests sometimes, but overall, they've done a great job. Same thing here, Playland is the largest, the county is the largest employee of high school kids in Westchester County, hiring over 500, 600 kids a season. As I said, Peter will go into that a little bit more. But basically, that's where we're at, we've had a good season, even though, again, you've heard it a million times, the weather is a killer. When it rains on the weekends, other than you guys are miserable, we are too, because it's ka-ching, ka-ching that we're losing. Plus, our staff starts to get a little funky when they're way better busy, and then when -- because we don't always close, you know, they get some fooling around and characters and whatever. So, the weather is, it is, we either have had rain or we're in Vietnam. So, it's been interesting, to say the least, but overall, every day, Peter and I say, every night that we go to sleep, with nothing serious happening, everybody reasonably happy, we're okay. And basically, and this administration is very supportive of the Parks Department, thank God, as you know, Ken Jenkins is very familiar with our department, which is a big help, and George lives next door, so he's watching Playland, too. But all in all, overall, we're doing fine, and we continue to do what we got to do, and we're very proud. And finally, we should know shortly of being nationally re-accredited. We were re-accredited, we were accredited in 2003, and this is our fourth time. I don't know how we got re-accredited in 2013, 10 years is the hardest. And we were standing on what was the boardwalk, right after Sandy, it was gone, Playland was destroyed, Glen Island was destroyed, parts of Lazden was destroyed, and I thought, oh my God, I'm the new county exec -- new Commissioner, our facilities are destroyed, and re-accreditation is happening. And we got it, thank God, through a lot of good work, and we should know, as I said, shortly, we are the only recreation parks agency in the country that's nationally accredited. So we're very proud of that, tremendous amount of work, and we wear it on our emblems and everything else. So, on that note, I'm going to turn it over to Peter. Any questions for me, or do you want to wait till the very end?
Is the 3% gross or net?
It's gross or net, the 3%, it's gross. The 40 -- the fact that we are 47 million of the 2 billion.
0.3% of the entire county operating budget.
That's before your income.
That's before we make back our 70%.
Yes, 70%, yes.
So you're really only about 2.3%.
We're a smidgen.
Yeah. Maybe you look at the pie chart.
Yeah, we're like a sliver, so, thank you very much. And guys, as always, we invite you to come to any of our facilities, just always call Peter and myself, and we'd love to have you come by, so, thank you.
Good morning again, I'm Peter Tartaglia, Deputy Commissioner of Parks. Before I get into Playland, just note on this map, we're in almost, not in all, but in almost every community within Westchester County. So, we've got a county park, north, south, east, west, we have them on Long Island Sound, we have them on the Hudson River, we have them northern Westchester, central Westchester, southern Westchester. So we deal with communities all the time. We're dealing with, you know, not just Rye, but North Salem, Croton, wherever it may be, Scarsdale, you can go on and on and on. We're pretty much everywhere, which is a good thing. We have what's considered more of like a, if you looked at it, more of a state park system, because we're living in a county that has 43 municipalities, and each one, most of those have their own parks. So, it gets a little complicated as to who owns what sometimes. Regarding Playland, this is our 90th season, it's the -- we opened in 1928, we're continuing to go strong, we have some capital projects that are on their way. I'll just give a little history, it'll be quick, I know it's hot, so I won't keep you too long. Opened in 1928, Playland became a national historic landmark in 1987. What that means is not just, you know, a ride is a national historic landmark, they are, but the entire park is. So there's seven rides, there's all the Art Deco structures, there is the flow of the park, the way it was built, that you could see from the fountain to the tower and the tower to the fountain. It was the first totally planned amusement park in the United States. It was built with a mall specifically, and music emanating from the music tower, to try to get a flow of people to go from section to section, whether it be rides, games, or food. Essentially, that layout remains the same. We've lost parts of that over the years to fires and structures that could no longer remain standing. But we're in the process of a 11-project restoration of the park with our new partner, Standard Amusements, but the 11 projects are county projects, and what they will address is the infrastructure of many buildings at the park, the pool, and, you know, we had a fire here last year, if those of you don't, had not heard about it, we had a fire on the Carousel Building. This was during operation on a Sunday. It is an open-air building, and people were evacuated immediately, and there was no life and safety issue. But it started on the roof, it's a lamella roof, which is kind of this building, all the weight stands upon itself, it's kind of like a house of cards, a little electrical short at the bottom where the lights are, and the fire went in up through an open cupola looking for air. So, we evacuated people immediately, then the horses were in danger, those horses were worth a lot of money. It's a very, very famous, rare piece that was hand carved by Charles Carmel, he was well-known in the industry at the time. The horses date back before the park, to 1915. The part, this ride was at Savin Rock in Connecticut before the building was built for it, for Playland's inaugural season in 1928. We're in the process of getting the horses restored, they were not burned, but they did have a lot of damage due to soot and water getting into the joints, they're all wood, they need to be stripped down to the wood, fixed, for the lack of a better word, restructured, and then painted back up to the original colors. We have a company who did that in the 1990s, they received the bid to do it again, so they have a lot of, they have all the information they need, we know what the original colors were. That's just a little bit of a flavor. As far as operations, this place is day and night this time of year, and as Kathy said, it's been a rough call. Every day's a call, do you stay open, do you not, with some of the weather we've had. Usually when the storms hit, 5, 6, 7 o'clock, late in the day, that could ruin the amusement park business for the night. If we can stay open, of course we do. It depends on if it's lightning, if there's wind involved, so on and so forth. It's been a lot, we've made more calls this year in our beaches and pools in Playland than I can remember in a very, very long time. The movie Big was filmed here, on the boardwalk, and that's what, you know, I know everybody here is local, usually when people come from out of town, usually mention that, and they know right away, that scene with the Zoltar machine, which was right on the boardwalk over here, and you can see the Art Deco designs behind it. It's Big's third, Big came out 30 years ago, so we've been pushing it on social media, we try to use everything we can. I'm happy, of course, later, if everybody or anybody wants to stay to give a more of a tour, answer any questions you may have out in the park, or answer any questions you have now.
Has the private donation agreement, is that signed, sealed, and delivered?
Well, it is, it is, it is, it's signed.
But it's?
It's under, it's under the, it was signed under the Astorino administration, and the Latimer administration is looking at it, the Law Department is looking at it, you know, and there's some things in there that they would like to change, so it will probably be a renegotiation period. But right now, we're, that renegotiation period did not start, so we are working with Standard Amusements, not on operations, we operate the park, but on things they would like to bring in.
Discovery.
Their master discovery, that what their master plans would be. But by no, by no means is the story over, so it will continue. Thank you.
I just have one thing. I'm sorry, I neglected to do one thing, just to mention, we do a 10-year review, we pay somebody, a consultant, to come in, and every time we've done it, the highest rating out of all the things that you're looking at are our trails. It's unbelievable, over 200 miles of trail that we're responsible for, we have the North County Trail, South County Trail, BRP, by Croton Aqueduct, we have trails everywhere, and it comes out higher than golf, higher than the pools, higher than anything else. So needless to say, we have done a lot of work over the years on our trails, the BRP was redone not that long ago. I'm sure you have heard, there's a lot of complaints about the North and South County Trail, they are in states of disrepair, that is one of our capital projects, the North County Trail is going to be done first, and then the design is finishing for the South County Trail, but the construction, the material is ready to rock and roll, I think, Anthony Zano.
We are at the board lunch, we went to the full board yesterday, the South County Trail we designed, and the construction, we were able to move that up, so it'll be.
Without committee, I believe.
Yeah, we're going to the committee. Literally, we'll have fireworks shooting off once that's done, because I get a complaint twice a day on what's happening there, and it is what it is. Two other quick things, County Center is undergoing one of our capital projects, it's redoing our sound system and the lights. If you went in the County Center right now, the ceiling has now been completely changed. We are redoing it so that we can get bigger and better shows, and we want to be as independent as we can, so if Norman wants to come in and do a show, we're not hitting her with an outrageous additional. In addition to the rent, it's bringing in the sound, the lighting, et cetera, et cetera. So, we're very excited about that. They have a very tiny window, because we're booked up the Wazoo, you know, starting in October again, so they're working almost around the clock right now, but we're getting there. And as you all know, you've probably read, Spray Ridge Pool has been an interesting scenario. Work was done last year on one of the pools and the spray deck. We had issues this year, we were not able to open, it became quite, there were a lot of verbiage about it, but we're in a good spot right now. The competition pool, the big pool, which will be a competition pool, has been broken down, and they're, with the weather being okay, they're going to zoom right through, hopefully, Hugh. And this county, yeah, and this county exec, no problem.
They're working during the heat wave.
Yes. So hopefully, for 2019, the entire facility at Spray Ridge Pool slash Park will be open to the public, so we're very excited about that. A few other capital projects, I know you look at a lot of them, but those are the really, those are the big ones that we're working on right now. Thank you.
Okay, next, check the meeting dates, note that two of them are on Wednesdays due to holidays, hopefully, everyone can make them. Okay, adoption of the minutes, there were revised minutes that were emailed out yesterday with a few changes. If you've had a chance to look them over, can I have a motion to approve the revised minutes? All in favor? Opposed? Chambers mark. Patterns, which is the bible for the County Planning Department and the Planning Board, emphasizes centers and corridors as the location for development within the county. Now, the centers in the county have been doing pretty well, lots of development are going into the centers. The corridors, not so much. There was an article in the Journal News last week about how Central Avenue is suffering. Also, we know that the Platinum Mile has been suffering, that's both the office at the Platinum Mile and the retail on Central Avenue, so I think that may be something we should be looking into in terms of the future of the corridors and what kind of planning ideas could be proposed to the municipalities that would help revitalize those corridors. Okay, Commissioner?
Good morning, everyone. Just a couple things real quick. Last week, we submitted our paperwork to HUD to reestablish ourselves as an urban county consortium. So we have 25 communities that are all in, 347,000 people approximately, so at this point, while the paperwork's in, we're just waiting for HUD to confirm. We are still working with a couple additional municipalities that are still on the fence about joining, so we may grow that still, and certainly for next year, we'll have an opportunity to revisit with all the municipalities that did not join. But also, last Thursday, we submitted the first lead grant that we've put in for HUD for a long time. So we submitted for a $3.5 million grant to reestablish our rehab program, so we're looking forward to that. And lastly, starting yesterday, we have our first job posting, it's in almost 10 years. So, the administration has signed off, I'm so excited, I've signed on our ability, thank you, on our ability to start filling positions, including a deputy commissioner, so, yeah, so we're going to hire a new housing director, so we really, it's going to be exciting in the next couple of months as we start to reverse that trend. Keep in mind, right now, we have four vacant positions in our 23-person budget, so it's going to be important for us to really start getting staff back on board instead of losing them, so, that's it for me.
Okay, the referrals from the period June 16th to July 15th. Andrea, I think you need to recuse yourself.
One half matters. Yeah, so I would just, I would go to adopt them, but I need to recuse myself of the one half, so that it was going to be.
Any other comments on the referrals? What we did is, we had several of them presented at the last meeting, some of the larger ones, so that the board members would have more information in terms of voting for or against the referrals. So I think, you know, hopefully, we'll continue to do that on some of the major, and we have one on today as well. So, if you've had a chance to review them, can I have a motion to ratify the actions taken from June 16th through July 15th? Second? Second? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, we have a referral of interest, which is the Hamilton Green Proposal in White Plains.
Okay, so this was a referral that we've been reviewing for the past year, year or something? something. Oh, I'll talk louder, that's fine. Okay, so this is a referral we've been looking at for the past year and a half. It's in downtown White Plains, and this is a picture of what it might look like, but let's just get into the details. This is, it's basically right in the center of White Plains. This is the White Plains Mall that will be torn down and redeveloped. So the White Plains Mall is right here on Hamilton Avenue. So the front side's on Hamilton Avenue, it's kind of an iconic place, Mark around it, and Martin Luther King Boulevard. And here's a picture from Google Street View. It's a very recognizable building in downtown White Plains. It's where the DMV is, and there's a whole bunch of stores inside that are just very unique. You know, if you need to get your sewing machine fixed, there's a store. If you need to get your shoes fixed, you know, yeah, religious supplies. So it's actually kind of a full mall, but it just has these wacky stores that aren't anywhere else, and the DMV, of course. Okay, so what's proposed is, they propose to tear the entire building down and build eight hundred and sixty apartments in four buildings. There would be eighty-five thousand four hundred square feet of retail and restaurant space, mostly at the ground level, but also at the second level. And this includes a craft food market hall, which would be the first of its type in White Plains. There would be publicly accessible open spaces, but that would be slightly above grade, and I'll show that to you in a minute. And then, of course, there'd be structured parking for nine hundred and fifty-six vehicles. So this is a picture, just a rendering of what it would be, so I'll kind of walk you through it. Okay, so basically, this here is, okay, this here is Hamilton Avenue, right here, and this is the Power Authority Building right here, and this is Martin Luther King Boulevard, this way, and then this is Barker Avenue along this side, and Cottage Place is in the back. This is the Ritz-Carlton Building over here. So as you can see, these are two kind of tall residential buildings, and then the shorter ones are going to be in the back. And then in the middle, there's going to be this open space. So the open space is about twelve feet above grade, so you can see here, there's like a big staircase that would go up to it. The parking, the entrance to the parking is going to be through this way. This is going to be a parking structure that will be screened with like fake windows and stuff like that to not make it, well, it'll look like a parking structure, but they'll try their best to make it look like something different. And then, yes. Oh, what is this?
She's the commissioner.
Ah, yeah, I know, it looks like a radio antenna, right? Okay, so, so, so the top part here, this is going to be an open space for the building residents, but below, this is going to be the publicly accessible open space area. And then along all the street frontages, they are proposing like, you know, ground-level retail and stuff. So here's just an exploded version of what it would be. This is the ground level. You can see the parking enters from Barker Avenue, and also the loading comes from Barker Avenue. Retail at the ground floor level. The craft food hall would have an entrance to the street here on Hamilton Avenue. This is the staircase from both Martin Luther King and from Hamilton, going to this, what they call the Hamilton Green, which will have access to the food hall and some of the retail spaces. And then above that will be the parking and the four buildings. So just to give you some context of what it would look like in the rest of downtown White Plains.
Is there really just one entrance into the parking?
The parking? You know, actually, I think there, there might be one, you know, I have to go back and, this is the problem, because the graphics we have are limited. Definitely the main entrance for the parking is here, off of Barker. There might be, you know, I have to go back and look at the plans.
Nine hundred and fifty-six cars with one entrance, that could be tricky.
Well, you also have to keep in mind that a lot of people, being downtown White Plains, you know, they park like at a municipal lot and they walk over. Certainly, the daytime population, like, for me, working at the county, I'm not going to, I'm not going to drive here, you know, I'll just walk, you know. So the daytime population will probably just walk here. It's mostly, honestly, the parking is primarily for the residents of the building. But then to give you some context, so in terms of building heights, they won't be the shortest buildings in town, but they won't be the tallest either. They'll kind of be in the middle, about the same height as the Fifty Main Street Building over on Main Street when you come into the city, about that same height. This is two hundred and eighty feet, so, and so will be, the tallest two buildings of the development will be that same height, but shorter than the Ritz-Carlton and the city center buildings. Okay, so for the review timeline, we've already sent three letters in two thousand seventeen in response to lead agencies, scoping, and a draft EIS. So we made most of the comments in two thousand seventeen. A final EIS was accepted in June, and then they had a finding statement a month later in July. We noted when we, when I reviewed the final EIS, in this case, most of the comments that we made were addressed. They, there were a number of issues we sided with the project as initially proposed, like it was, for example, the initial proposal, like there was no entrance to the food hall from the street. The stairways to get to the, the open space there were very narrow and hard to find, and we made comments on all those things, and the applicant came back and made changes to the project. So in this case, it was a good situation where they made change, we asked for changes, and they made them. The zoning amendments, this, this required a zone change. They have a brand-new zone called Transit Oriented Development Zone, so that, those changes were adopted on July second. The site has been rezoned to this brand-new zoning district. And so currently, it's basically coming in for site plan review, and we sent a letter just noting general support for the project and acknowledging that our previous comments were addressed. The only thing that they didn't address in the final EIS was the I&amp;I mitigation that we always ask for. They didn't have a strong enough response to the comment that we made, so we just made that comment again. And, well, thank you. And that's basically it. So if there's any questions, let me know, and I can answer them for you.
Okay, thank you. Matters for Planning Board Action. Okay, first, capital budget amendment forty-six. Peter, you're hailing this one?
Good morning. Lennox Harris. I'm the Deputy CIO for Westchester County, and Bit Forty-Six. All right, so Bit Forty-Six is a capital project to fund the restructuring of equipment, software, hardware for Playland to help support the infrastructure for the rides, as well as the point-of-sale terminals that are used to conduct transactions. And this capital money will be used to purchase the software, hardware, and networking, and infrastructure equipment that's needed. This equipment has been basically, hasn't been supported probably for like the last ten years, so basically, we need to upgrade all of the infrastructure equipment that supports the rides, as well as the overall infrastructure for running up the operations for Playland. So it's software, network equipment, cabling, and also training and implementation services for the systems that we will be implementing to upgrade. That's pretty much what it covers.
Does this also take into consideration, I see you have a PSO, taking into consideration service-level agreements or...
Yes, service-level agreements would basically for vendors that we will be doing business with to conduct the information or the contracts that we will work with, the particular companies that we will use to get the equipment, so that's included.
Well, regardless, the question was, how does this tie into Standard's contract? It ties more directly into the park, because we've been sort of in a holding pattern with the contract, and the takeover year has changed each year. We're definitely operating the park in two thousand nineteen, and we don't know exactly when Standard will be taking over. We have to come into compliance with the way that we do our business. We're not in compliance in certain areas. I'll just give you the simplest one is the chip, the chip readers. That's simple. This is, in order to do that, you've got to do a lot of other things. But in the very beginning, at the very least, in the very beginning, if there's a takeover, it usually comes at the end of one season and goes into another season, so most likely, even if Standard were to, when they were to come in, they would use this system until they decide whether they want to put another system in. The system works well. It's a matter of it needs to be upgraded at this point.
This was not in the whole big capital project budget package that we voted on at the last meeting, is that correct?
No, this is a, this is an added starter, I believe, and the reason why, the reason why, it's in the two thousand nineteen, but we've moved it to an added starter.
It's an amendment, now, I'm not sure about whether they're moving it this year or not. Do you consider that as a capital budget amendment this year?
Yes.
So that's where it stands right now.
Right. I'll give you the reason.
I think in last year's adopted budget, it was in two thousand and nineteen. What it is, is they need to move it up this year so it can actually happen this off-season.
Where was it in the one we just approved last month?
It was in that, it was in that as a new project for two thousand nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, and now...
Well, we're asking, and this is really timing. The reason is timing. We have to do this off-season. We can't do it when the park is running. You can't do bits and pieces, because you'll have glitches, and then you can have the whole park down during a day. So we're, we've worked with IT, we've had discussions, and in order to be able to order the equipment, have enough time to have it put in, and there's going to be beta, there's going to be all sorts of testing that will go on prior to us opening May, so we'd like to get a, we'd like to start this now, so there's absolutely no confusion by the time we open in May.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion to... Second? All in favor? Opposed?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Can we just go back? I should, we're, I'm curious, do we have to enact the cost? Was that included in the budget that we posed? The seven hundred and thirty thousand?
Okay, it's just missing zero.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, the next capital budget amendment is BPL forty, stormwater management.
Great. Good morning, everybody. I'm going to try my best to get you excited about stormwater management. But is anybody familiar with the MS four program? I've heard you may have heard of MS four. The MS four is the Phase Two implementation by the EPA of the Clean Water Act. So first, the Phase One, they went after large cities and large facilities like wastewater treatment plants and industrial discharges. Phase Two, they are going after what's called the municipal separate storm sewer system, which is MS four, so that's, that's what that acronym stands for. I know you didn't really want to know, but you do now. The, this is just an overview of the county's MS four system, which concludes everything that discharges stormwater runoff, creates stormwater runoff, or conveys stormwater runoff. This is just the sixth major drainage basin in the county. Every municipality, including the county, is a regulated entity under this program, so everybody's subject to regulations. The regulations, subject to the county as a traditional non-land-use control entity, are slightly different than local municipalities, but for what we're going to be discussing here, were almost identical. And that is mapping your system, and then in conducting inspections on key components of that system to ensure that illicit discharges aren't occurring, or if they are, that you're correcting them and eliminating them. Just an overview of some of the county properties, under a number of different operating departments, including Department of Public Works Transportation. They unfortunately, for Commissioner DeGruisens, have the bulk of the work under this program. You're really looking at outfalls, so stormwater outfalls, but you're also, as the program continues to become, or increase in requirements, you're going to be looking at catch basins and other pieces of the storm sewer system. Parks also has a number of facilities that also create or discharge stormwater runoff, and then we get down to Department Environmental Facilities. Not, most of the Department Environmental Facilities, particularly wastewater treatment plants and transfer stations, are covered under the Phase One program, so they have individual permits that cover stormwater, but we try and wrap this, the system that I'm going to be talking about in a minute, we're trying to create for the entire county so that, to make it easier for our staff to meet the requirements under this program. Department of Health is really involved in a lot of our sampling and track down of illicit discharges, when and if we find them. And then the Planning Department has traditionally been involved primarily in education outreach and stormwater, coordinating the activities of the county through a stormwater committee. This is just a really ugly map of some of the storm sewer systems and priority water bodies. So this, so there's a list of water bodies that are impaired in the county that the DC maintains and updates. They're just actually updating it now. We have to identify what those are, and we have a lot of information in the county GIS. IT is a huge piece of this solution, basically, because managing this data, there's a lot of data that we have to manage, and a lot of it we have in the GIS right now. So this is just some examples of some of the little triangles are outfalls and catch basins and other points that we have to inspect regularly, and that's just some of the information on some of these. Another example of some of the information that we have at county golf courses. We've created a inspection program with some data, you know, some information, a little guidance materials that were extracted from some guidance prepared by the EPA, and we've used that and created some inspection forms as well. What we want to do with this is, is to create a, an online data management system using an application that will make it a lot easier for county staff to perform the inspections that are required. We are currently negotiating an order on consent with DC. We have not been doing any of these, had any of these inspections for a number of years. I won't tell you how many, but it's been, it's been quite a while, and we need to get that, we need to get that on. So what the, the resolution before you is a capital budget amendment to fund the creation of a program. This is a little bit of, this is a snapshot of the viewer that we have now with the existing data that we have, and this is available. But we want to look at tools like this. This is Survey one, two, three, which is a free piece of software through Esri. They're the GIS manufacturers that we use, and that allows you to create little survey forms that you, that you can then serve on a smartphone or a tablet, or any kind of device that you can take out in the field. You can create whatever information you want. It allows you to put in maps, put in new points, or your existing points will pop up on existing maps, and then you can go through and add a whole bunch, any kind of information that you want. You can have, have little pop-ups for, to guide people through filling out the form, and we've created just in, literally in a few hours, we've created a couple of sample forms. It's very easy to use, and we're hoping that this is a solution for us. So part of the BPL forty capital budget amendment, a large part of it, is going to pay for a consultant to get us up to speed with the mapping and the inspections. It's just well beyond the resources that we have currently. The DC is going to require us to get to do this in a year, and we really don't have the resources to do that. So a big piece of that is going to go to a consultant to get to complete that mapping. Another piece is going to help develop this program and then conduct the additional inspections that are required. We have to do facility audits. We have to do, inspect the BMPs, like you see over here, you know, like swales and, and stormwater basins and everything that we've installed since two thousand and three, and we have a lot of other inspections, too. So another piece of that is going to be to develop that tool and then implement it, training staff along the way as well on how to use that. So that's what's, that's the, that's basically it in a nutshell. If anybody has any questions, I can take them.
So this is all for data management and mapping. It doesn't include actual repairs to specific...
No. No, if we, if, if, if in, during the course of an inspection, we find an illicit discharge, or we find a structure that needs repair or replacement, that's going to become, and that will come, have to come out of a separate budget.
But does it include inspection of all of those?
It'll include, it'll include one full cycle of inspections. Their permit right now requires us to inspect once every five years, with the exception of the east of Hudson watershed, which has heightened requirements. That's a phosphorus-restricted watershed, so there are heightened requirements there. Within that watershed, we have to, we have to map everything, the conveyance, everything from where the stormwater goes into a stormwater system to where it comes out. So the catch basins, manholes, pipes, swales, and then the outfalls as well. Unfortunately, we don't have too many properties up there, but we do have, we do have some, actually parks, mostly is, is going to be parks. We've been turning over most of the county roads up there to local municipalities, so, but that's going to be an issue. But that, this program will get us through one full, it'll bring us up to speed, and hopefully, within a year or two, we'll be doing it ourselves and have a, have a tool that will make it easier for... that will make it easier for, easy for us to do it. We also, once that, when and if that does actually work, we would like to make it open to the local municipalities as a shared service, so they can use that data, data management system and a similar application.
This was in the package that we voted on last month?
I don't, I don't think so. I don't think so.
No.
Yeah, I think this is.
So on top of all the hundreds of millions of dollars, this is an additional five million on top of what we voted on last month?
I, no, no, the, no, the, all right, yeah. The capital project, BPL forty already exists. So that, so you, and it's a general capital project. That's for stormwater management on various facilities. This is to create a specific program within that larger BPL forty. So we're taking eight hundred and fifty thousand out of that five million.
This was approved years ago.
The five million is an appropriation, now we want to go and bond eight hundred and fifty thousand of that for this project. The, yeah, the next ones are going to confuse it as well, with the flooding is the same way, the flood mitigation programs.
Your resolution says eight hundred thousand.
Oh.
Is it eight?
It, I think it was, I thought it was eight fifty, but it may, no, it may be eight, I think it was eight, five, five and three, I think we had, we had them broken up, so, yeah, that's fine.
So it's taking for actual implementation eight hundred thousand out of a previously approved five million dollar capital budget?
Yes.
Right, but we actually could put the addresses in now related to where we're going to use this eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, we have a couple, a couple of capital projects that are really programs, and then once we, once we actually get specific projects under those, we come for a capital budget amendment to actually add that project to the larger project.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion to approve this amendment to the capital budget? Second? All in favor?
Motion was from Mike, second was from Randy.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, BPL twenty-six, flood mitigation.
Okay, this is a similar issue, or similar situation, where we have BPL twenty-six, this is a large project, capital project, it's got well over fourteen million, or almost fifteen million dollars, I think, in it, in the appropriation. This was created in conjunction with, or as a result of, the county stormwater management law, which was adopted by the Board of Legislators in 2011. This law and the, and the accompanying capital project is to provide funding assistance to local municipalities for flood mitigation projects. The way that is done is the county, the Department of Planning and the Department of Public Works and Transportation work together with local municipalities to prepare these reconnaissance plans for each of the five major drainage basins in the county. From those recon, those reconnaissance plans identify locally identified projects or flood problem areas, or projects that are intended to mitigate flooding throughout the county. So what you have here, one, and then whenever we do get a specific project, we come to back, we have to do a capital budget amendment to add that specific project, that location, into the capital project. So that's what, that's what you're looking at before you. Now, there's actually four capital project, or capital budget amendments that you're looking at, three of which are for flood mitigation projects at the local level, and one is a county project for a, an early warning system, a flood early warning system. So this is just an example from, this is a, all of the three local projects are within the coastal Long Island Sound watershed, we have a reconnaissance plan for that. In that, we have, these are just an example of excerpts of some of the, we send surveys out to the local municipalities, they identify in a map and a completed survey form for each of these flood problem areas. So you'll see, one of the, actually, the, one of the projects is looking at this flood problem area here in the village of Larchmont along Pine Brook Drive. So this is, this is an overview, this is a map from the reconnaissance plan that shows the little flood problem areas pulled out. This is the first one, it's in the village of Larchmont, it's to identify or address, this is, now, one of the things that we did learn after going through all these reconnaissance plans, that there really weren't any shovel-ready projects, any, anywhere in the county. One of the things that we, or the criteria that we use to evaluate projects is, we don't want people to just push water somewhere else and make it, so you're just pushing a problem around the county, excuse me, but we want them to really kind of come up with a solution that's not going to create or exacerbate any flooding anywhere elsewhere in the, in the watershed. So that kind of knocked out a couple of projects, but even then, there were very few projects that were shovel-ready, so we're really looking at studies at this point. The, the funding program is broken up into two phases, the first phase is to provide the engineering analysis to identify a practical solution, and then the second phase would be for construction. So the three that you have before you are all for studies, the first of which is in the village of Larchmont, it's to look at Pine Brook, there's a lot of flooding in this area here, this is the Premium River downstream, but we're really focusing on this, is Post Road here, but this, this watershed goes all the way up to Beach Mount Lake and the city of New Rochelle, and the city is actually currently working on a project up there. It's not going to provide much flood benefit, but we're going to have them look at the entire watershed. That's one of the things that we want to do with the studies as well, is to look at the entire watershed and see where there may be opportunities for flood improvements. So that, that's the first one, village of Larchmont, Pine Brook. The second one is along the Hutchinson River, starting at Lake Innisfree or Lake Isles down here, and then going all the way up to Hutch and the village of Scarsdale. A lot of flooding in Scarsdale, East Chester, and New Rochelle, along these, these areas. Those three communities have kind of teamed together, they want to do this study. We had a, we looked at an initial study that was done, gosh, it's got to be almost twelve, twelve years ago now, but we want to update that and actually come up with some solutions for some, some projects. The, so that's, that's the second piece. And then the third capital budget amendment is for a similar study in the village of Ry Brook and right in, all right, this is Bowman, the Bowman Avenue Dam is right here, this is the city of Ry, Bowman Avenue, Westchester Avenue, and then we have this condominium development here at Avon Circle, which gets repeated flooding during storm events, as well as the Portchester Middle School is located right there. That's really how the project started, was the school district approached the county and said, we want to, we need to fix some, some flooding here. We think there may be an opportunity to provide some, a little detention in that area in conjunction with some, some development, but the, this, this constriction here, this bottleneck has to get alleviated in order to fix that. So that, that's the last, the last study there is for, for that study, and that, that's in the, that's with the village of Ry Brook, yes.
There's major construction going on now by the Ry Ridge.
Oh, right here?
Yeah, right behind that long, thin building.
Oh, okay.
There's major construction going on there, it's been going on for a while. What is that?
Is it here, or is it on the little spit, there's little?
No, no, it's actually on their property.
No, it's, yeah.
It's right behind, right?
With the, with the shopping center, directly.
Right, but it's.
I remember they had some approvals for.
The other townhouse was built five years ago.
Right, the townhouses that are right?
No, no, I'm not talking about that.
Back in here?
Yes.
We could, we could check with the, with the village about that.
Yeah, because it's right on the border of the flood area.
Right. Yeah, no, we don't, we definitely don't encourage building in flood plains.
It's elevated.
I know, it's up, it's up out, right?
There's a road in there now, I don't, I don't know what it.
Hopefully, I'm sure it has some stormwater controls that it didn't have before.
Yes.
It has water quality associated with local laws, so that's a plus. It was a parking lot anyway, but they're redeveloping it.
Well, it was an area that wasn't, that was just open, it wasn't used for parking, and now they've graded it and done all that.
Yeah, I remember they, they used to have like a little, little dog run back here. And I, and I used to be.
Right there, it's right there.
All right, they, they, I used to be the consultant for the village when I worked at Frederick Clark, and they did approve some townhouses back here, right on the, right on the, overlooking the pond, that might be the development. They also approved a little bit of the development in that. Those are, those are built, right?
Yeah, they're already built.
This is, I was going to say, this is going way, way back.
It took a while, but they, yeah, they were built three, four years ago.
All right, so those are the, those are the three studies, and like I said, we also are looking for a capital budget amendment to provide a match to a grant that the county received, to implement, develop and implement a early flood, early flood warning system, or flood early warning system. However you want to, want to, want to phrase that. The, that is a, that's a four hundred thousand dollar total project cost, we got two hundred thousand dollars from the state, so we're asking for another two hundred thousand dollars from BPL twenty-six. The, normally, we wouldn't, I mean, BPL twenty-six is really, really for local mitigation, but the Board of Legislators added money in 2015 to BPL twenty-six specifically for a stream gauge program. So we're asking to use that and, and use that for, to match this grant that we received to create a flood warning system. Now, it's not going to be countywide, the, the design will be intended to be countywide, but we're going to basically, we're going to try and install it in one or two pilot watersheds to see how that works and, and then go from there.
Yeah, that was, that was originally done in the eighties, in fact, it was countywide at that point.
Yeah.
We had a couple of recessions in the eighties and it didn't survive.
Yeah.
But I was, I was directly in, related, we worked with the National Weather Service, we had gauges in every park, so still see a gauge and occasionally go, you know, in Saxon Woods, I think it's still there, to say, what's that? Well, that was a county, what I mean, rain gauge.
Right.
That would send the information to the county office, building workers, the National Weather Service.
And that's one of the things that first we're going to look at, is inventory, the old gauge systems, this little big gauge of stream gauges and weather stations, and create a network of both, so that we can better understand how streams respond to different types of storms, and hopefully develop some early warning out of that.
Without that, you can't balance a model, you can't calibrate the model, you really don't know.
Yeah, we're, we're using.
The models are so complicated.
It does, and, and having that real, local, that higher resolution data, right now, when we do any type of, or when engineers do a lot of stormwater modeling, they're using data from either Westchester County Airport, or Bridgeport, or one of the other National Weather Service sites where, which are.
The sixties and seventies when they stopped the program.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, just dropped lead up.
Yeah, so.
Dave, you had another one in our package, which was for the Canadian to go sawmill study.
That, well, that, that's, yeah, that's actually tied in, the, that will be the pilot watershed for the early, early warning system.
If you want an action on that one also.
Yes, yeah, just so that we can go for that, the, the capital budget amendment to use the funding from BPL twenty-six for that.
Any other questions?
I've always been happy with the planning department technical expertise, and wanted to know, I've seen across the county, not across the county, but across the country, there are some kinds of departments that are using drones to help get this type of information. Is there any thinking in the future, possibly, about being able to use that type of technology?
Actually, the state DC is using drones a lot now, and I think, and they're really developing that program. I think that before we developed one, I've talked to Sam, we're in IT about some of this, about how to, how to collect additional GIS data, using some drone technology. I think we're going to follow the state's lead, and we may actually even, they're starting to make those services available to local municipalities and other agencies, so if we, if we need something like that, I think that they, they might be, they'd be the first person that I would call to say how to, how to do that. But yeah, the technologies, and drone technology has come a long way with different types of sensors, that they can really kind of help collect a lot of data. We need stream flow data, and there really is very little way to do that other than getting in the stream and, and putting a gauge in there, but the weather data or some other things, especially, you know, we all, everybody that's familiar with, with flooding and, and storms in Westchester County, we get those real intense storms that, you know, barely show up on a, as a blip on the National Weather Service, but they cause a lot of flooding. It may be short period, but it's, flooding is flooding, so.
Yeah, the purpose of this capital project too, is the projects that are, that are large enough for federal funding, part of engineer studies, they, they have a size they don't look at, and these are the projects that sat forever.
Right.
Municipalities, they're usually intermunicipal projects, so they just sat forever, didn't have the funding, didn't have the resources, so that's when the county stepped in.
Yeah.
We have to take these, or can we just go down all four at one time?
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
Michael, all in favor?
All in favor.
Opposed? Okay, last matter for board action, assail and conveyance of easements, Harbor Island Park.
Good morning, in your day of meeting package, you have a resolution regarding a correction of a property description for a land swap at the village of Mamaroneck for the West Basin Pumping Station. I'm just going to quickly read through this. It's kind of hard to see here, but just imagine yourself down at Harbor Island Park in Village of Mamaroneck. Back in 1984, the New York State Legislature authorized the village of Mamaroneck to grant an easement to the county of Westchester for the purposes of constructing a sanitary sewage pumping station and sewage pump lines in villages Harbor Island Park, with the surface of the lands to be restored and continued for use as park purposes. So facilities were underground and restored as part of Harbor Island Park. Since Superstorm Sandy, Department of Environmental Facilities has been trying to raise their critical, some of their critical infrastructure above ground, and one of those facilities is the West Basin Pumping Station here on Post Road at the Rantah Avenue, and that project will be raising some of the pieces of that pumping station above ground, kind of contained in a concrete barrier, so if the floods come up through the harbor, it'll be protected. So, this is how the story goes now. To accommodate the upgrade, a village determined that it was necessary to amend the 1984 Act to permit the above-ground structure, because now it's not below grade and you can now see it, the state determined that there'd be replacement park plan had to be included. So, last year, the county board of legislators adopted a home rule resolution in support of the amendment of the 1984 Act to permit the upgrade work and authorized the conveyance of, by the county to the village of a small parcel, about six hundred and thirty square feet, of its Mamaroneck wastewater treatment facility, which is adjacent here at the intersection of Mamaroneck Avenue and Forest Road, a small little piece of corner right at Mamaroneck and Boston Post Road, six hundred and thirty square feet was approved. Subsequent to that approved land swap to make up for the little loss of park land at the pump station, it was discovered that a piece of that little parcel was, had already previously been taken by New York State Department of Transportation, and as a result, it became necessary to revise the property description of the land swap. So here we are in 2018.
Six hundred and thirty square feet.
So here we are in 2018, again, so to correct the property description of the land slot, back in June, the county board of legislators adopted a home rule resolution recommending the New York State Legislature's adoption of legislation amending the 1984 Act to correct the property description for the land swap proposed by the county in connection with that West Basin Pumping Station. So your resolution basically supports the updated, the updated swap land description, land swap, swap land, they're kind of used back and forth legalese, necessary for the upgrade of the West Basin Pumping Station improvement. So that's your resolution, that's the quick story. Oh, I'm sorry, a couple of quick slides, that's a zoom in. Again, if you're down at that intersection here, from the main entrance to Harbor Island Park, this is the, this is the county's treatment facility, the Mamaroneck Treatment Facility, and this was the original, this was the original, I'm sorry about that, this is the original boundaries of the six hundred and fifty square feet, this was already taken by New York State, so they tacked on this little block here, and if you go there, that's the entrance to Harbor Island Park, here's Post Road going south, southeast, there's our historic Mamaroneck Treatment Facility, little corner piece here with a nice lovely tree, that's what's going to be given to the village as a park, and it's appropriate because you're taking away a little piece down the road, and you've got a nice little corner here that is, adds to the village's park entrance. So that's in a nutshell.
Any questions for six hundred and thirty point five square feet?
Yeah, it's about the size of this country.
Has there been any, any opposition from the?
From the village or anything like that? No, in fact, we've got a resolution supporting this by the village, so they're in support of this, of the land swap, and the revised land swap, adjusting the property, so the village has to handle that.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion?
I'm in.
Second?
I'm, yeah.
Second, ready? All in favor?
I'm in.
Opposed? Approved, okay. Last on the agenda, Raise the Age Woodfield College.
Cottage.
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 Well, when we, when we were at the jail, it was, it seemed like it was a college there.
Do you mind if I sit here or is it okay?
That's great, you can talk.
Well, you're going to.
You need the mic to speak loud, so you can hear me, okay.
Well, when we, when we were at the jail, it was, it seemed like it was a college there.
Do you mind if I sit here or is it okay?
Well, you're gonna...
I might have to speak loud so you can hear me, okay. Okay. I hope this discussion is a little less complicated than the last resolution. It's interesting. All right, Norma asked if I can come in and just brief, give you a briefing on what's going on with the Raise the Age legislation. I don't want to assume that everyone is aware of all the little nuances that are associated with this legislation. So, I'm going to try to give you a Reader's Digest summary of what the Act actually does. Very simply put, it'll, it's bringing New York State into the 21st century in treating adolescents, 16 and 17-year-olds in a different model than the criminal court model. New York and North Carolina were the only two states in the country that treated 16-year-olds and 17-year-olds as adult criminals. As of October 1st this year, New York State will move away from that as 16-year-olds will now be considered for services in the family court. And then in 2019, 17-year-olds will move into the same system. So, there is a, a two-year phase in allowing, allowing these cases to be moved into the family court. Now, unlike a lot of other states, this legislation is a little quirky because one of the things that they did was they created a new court. Because the district attorneys in the state wanted to have a little bit more control over cases that were at the felony level, that were being committed by 16 and 17-year-olds. So, the way the law is crafted, that if a child that is 16 or 17 years old as of 2019 gets arrested on a misdemeanor offense, they automatically, their cases will go into the family court. They'll, they'll be treated just like 13, 14 and 15-year-olds are being treated in the current system. But for the felony cases, felony cases, they created what they called an adolescent park in, in the courts. That gives control to the district attorneys to make a decision on whether those cases should be tried in a, in a criminal adolescent park that is kind of modeled like the family court. That's supposed to have a family court judge sitting in it and have the cases stay there or the cases could be moved down to the family court. Now, the presumption in the law is that if a child is arrested on a nonviolent felony, nonviolent felony, the presumption in the law is that that case will go to the family court. Unless there are some mitigating circumstances that really haven't been defined yet in the law, actually have probably over the next couple of years. What circumstances will dictate cases staying in the adolescent park will be determined by the Court of Appeals through the, through the appellate process. Because we really don't know the criteria. But the presumption in the law is that all these nonviolent felony cases should move into the family court. And when you look at the numbers, majority of the felony arrests are for nonviolent felonies. All right, so it's safe to say that with all the misdemeanor cases and the nonviolent felony cases, most of the kids who are going to be getting arrested in New York State are going to work their way into the family court. And you're going to have a very small percentage of cases that are going to stay in the adolescent park, the criminal court park. All right, but bear in mind, even though it's a criminal court, the way the law is written, you got to have a family court judge or someone trained in family court matters presiding in that court. Because the, the understanding is that even though it's a criminal court, we, we want these kids treated a little bit differently than you would treat an adult offender that is older than 18-year-old. All right, and the district attorney has controls, some controls over it. And let me tell you, even the violent felony cases, if, again, if there are special circumstances, they also can be moved into the family court if there's an agreement with the judge, the district attorney and whoever is representing the child. Those cases can also move, but I, I got a feeling that kids that are arrested on armed robberies or weapons offenses or sexual assaults, things like that, those cases are going to stay in that adolescent criminal park more than likely. But there's not very many of them, all right, so that's, that's the good news. Now, as they always say, the devil is in the details in implementing this, all right? The state really didn't give us a whole lot of time to implement this law. I mean, even though the law was passed in April of 2017, all right, by the time the state got around to promulgating regulations, and they're still promulgating regulations, you know, that we, you know, we get, you know, that we've got to figure out how we're going to fit them into our, into our plans. So, we really didn't get any clear direction from the state until almost the spring of this year on what needed to be done. On how they were overseeing and setting up the regulations, you know, for us to proceed at county level. So, we're obviously scurrying around right now trying to figure out how we're going to meet the law. And one of our, one of our big headaches, probably the biggest headache that we're having right now is trying to figure out where, where we are going to house the 16 and 17-year-olds, all right? Primarily 16-year-olds for this year, which is a smaller number. When you look at the numbers, there are less arrests of 16-year-olds than there are 17-year-olds statewide, and that also holds true for, for Westchester. So, come hell or high water, October 1st, we have 16-year-olds, if they get arrested and they get arrested on one of these felony offenses and they need to be held, they cannot go to the county jail. They can't step foot on the footprint. They have got to be in what they call a specialized, secure detention facility that the state has promulgated special regulations, you know, on how those facilities are supposed to look. For instance, you need to have 80 square feet. Each child's got to have their own room. You got to have, the 16 and 17-year-old adolescent offenders cannot be housed in the same building with juvenile delinquents. So, there are, there are a number of regulations that have been promulgated that are, that, that causes some challenges for, for the Commissioner and I, you know, trying to figure out, you know, how, how do we get online for October 1st? You know, so that we could start, so that we could start taking these, these children. The biggest winner in this whole legislation is Joe Spann, who you just, you just... He doesn't have to deal with the 16 and 17-year-olds, you know, over the next couple of years. And I can tell you, the 16 and 17-year-olds are a pretty tough group because I ran the jail for 10 years. And I can tell you that we call it the minor block. There, there's some tough kids that could be in those, in those areas. So, that's why we got to make sure that we know what we're doing, whatever, whatever changes we're making to Woodfield. You know, Woodfield itself only has 24 beds total, and I want you to understand that.
They're going to show Woodfields on the...
Okay, good, yeah.
It's grasslands.
Yeah, Woodfield has 24 beds. We can get a variance to add like four or six more beds if we need to because we can, you know, change a couple of areas and get kids in there on a temporary basis, but it can't be permanent. So, and it's a regional center. A lot of people don't realize that it's not only Westchester County kids that are at Woodfield. We take kids from the entire Ninth Judicial District. So, it is a regional center. And actually, we get funding from the Office of Children and Family Services, you know, to support Woodfield. And then if we take any children in from other counties, we get 100% reimbursement, you know, for whatever their costs are, you know, to keep, to keep the children in Woodfield. Obviously, with the numbers of, of cases that we are now going to see, 16 and 17-year-olds that may require either detention because they're juvenile delinquents and judges want them remanded or they're part of this new population adolescent offender, Woodfield cannot, not even for Westchester. We were just putting Westchester kids in there. Have enough capacity to handle the numbers. So, we need to add, we, we have, we have a couple of projects going on right now. We have the immediate need to try to get some beds online for October 1st. And then we need to have a permanent solution on how we're going to house the number of kids that we're going to start seeing over the next couple of years when this law is fully implemented. So, in the short term, our solution is to add some modular buildings that will be attached to the existing building of, of, we're looking to add about 30 beds, 20 boys, 10 girls. We've signed a contract with a company out of Georgia that will be manufacturing the trailers, for lack of a better word. And they have to meet state specifications, you know, for the specialized, secured detention. It's all been reviewed by the State Commission of Corrections, it's been reviewed by the Office of Children and Family Services. Our people at the Department of Correction are also working with us, Department of Public Works, I mean, we have, Planning has been involved with us. So, we've, you know, we, we've had every, every agency that needed to be involved in getting us through the process of getting these, you know, temporary beds manufactured, delivered and have them hopefully available to be used by October 1st. If we're not there by October 1st, hopefully we'll be there, you know, very soon after that. But I'm, I'm still optimistic that hopefully we can get these trailers, you know, delivered and hooked up and have them functioning on October 1st. The second phase, once we get that done, is the permanent solution, which means we have to build a new building. The projected numbers, you know, and once I get, you know, some finalized numbers from the state, because it's a moving target, I get numbers every week that either add or leave the numbers that they're expecting us to see when this law is fully implemented. But to service the region, and O C F S has asked us to take on a couple more counties. We're taking on five additional counties that are contiguous to our Ninth Judicial District.
So, that's some 12 counties now?
It's 12 counties that will be utilizing Woodfield. We're looking at building the facility around 100 beds that we're going to need for Westchester and for, and for the region.
Right there?
Yep, right on the footprint, okay.
Could you just, just, I have an idea, I happen to be a criminal defense attorney, but can you just explain what area the Ninth Judicial District covers?
The Ninth Judicial District is, is Westchester, Putnam, Rockland, Duchess, Orange and Elston.
And then we're going beyond that?
Yeah, we're going beyond, yeah. The state has asked us to take on some smaller counties that are contiguous. The, the numbers there are not large. They're, they're only expecting...
More than counties.
Was that?
More than counties.
Northern counties.
Delaware, Broom, Schoharry, Columbia and Green.
So, they're, they're looking at... Yeah, they're, they're up there and their numbers, and their numbers are very, very small. They're, they're looking at a maximum of five to 10 kids per year that we would see from those bodies.
Will they go back to court appearances in those, in those counties?
Yeah, they're, they're sheriffs.
So, it's going to be like a three-hour...
Whatever, you know, I mean, if they, they get them there, you know, they got to pick them up and get them to court and if they need to come back, they come back. It's, you know, it's, their, their expenses totally...
Have you?
We get 100% reimbursement.
There are some shelters in Westchester now for kids that are closing.
No, no, you can't use those.
No, 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 I mean, couldn't the county buy, couldn't the county buy one of those and reconfigure it for county uses as opposed to building a new building?
No, we need to build a new building. We need to meet the spec, the state specs. I mean, Woodfield itself doesn't meet the state's specs, no. So, we got to, we're going to have to re, refurbish Woodfield and also, you know, build, and the state wants a new building and they're paying 100% for it. So, it's not costing you a penny.
Well, that, that's a good addition to the discussion.
We can't argue.
Yeah, right.
I give them whatever they want as long as they're paying for it, so.
How long do they, normally, how long does a child stay there?
Well, it, this, the law's a little bit different. Let me explain.
Well, how many kids are there now, today?
About a dozen, 10, 10 kids right now. We're under census.
At Woodfield's time or at the jail?
At Woodfield.
Okay.
At Woodfield.
Woodfield.
At Woodfield. So, yeah, I mean, we, we, if the way the law is written, is any cost associated with this new legislation is 100% funded by the state of New York.
They've seen, they've seen the light.
And they've already, they've already committed, I mean, our trailers, you know, these trailers that we're bringing in and a four-year contract to lease the trailers is $7 million, which has already been agreed upon by the state. So, we...
How are medical, uh, cover centers, uh, retained?
Was that, I'm sorry?
Medical coverage for the kids.
The way it's being done now, it's pay, it's, it's, it's in the, it's part of the contract that we pay, we get reimbursed from the state for it, so.
So, is it one side or they have to be...
Well, if we, there's an infirmary in, in Woodfield itself, but if they need any extra medical care, then they'll go to the medical center, which is extremely convenient since it's right next door.
Personnel wise, you, the population in the Woodfield system is down a bit, so you, at this point, don't think you're going to have to add more officers and personnel or...
We don't have officers. We contract for services there with Children's Village, actually provides, runs the, runs the facility for us. There are no county employees, no... It's a, it's a purely contractual. And there will be huge costs associated with the number of staff that are going to be needed to operate the trailers and the new buildings. Again, those costs will be paid 100% by the state. So, Children's Village right now is putting together their proposal of what their cost estimates will be to run the trailers. That will go directly to the state of New York. They'll review it and then we'll get, you know, a figure back from, from the state on what they're, what they're going to fund.
Do you know, have any idea where the extra, the expansion 100 beds will end up?
What if it, it would go right in the back, in that area back there.
100 beds?
Yeah, it would be...
Not the temporary, you're going to go off?
You're going to go off, okay. Yeah, that, that's all got to be, that's all got to be planned. And the other thing is that we have reached out to the New York State Dormitory Authority. You know, the governor added an amendment to the legislation before it was passed, you know, authorizing the dormitory authority to work with the counties. Which was extremely important to us because we have a cap of $10 million on what we can do, you know, so having the dormitory authority come in and work with us on us gets, gets us out of, you know, referendums and all of the things that we would get involved in.
Why is, so, I mean, the county is doing it and then gets reimbursed by the state?
Well, we're hoping that what will happen is that if we, if we get it our way, we want the dormitory authority to pay the state of New York, you know, directly back for whatever the costs are going to be to build a new building. Where we don't get involved in it. Hopefully, our involvement will be in the, you know, planning of the building, you know, what, what our needs are, what we're going to, what we're going to need in the building as far as services, programs, all the other things that would be associated with a juvenile facility. Which is a lot different than, than what you saw at the jail.
Since they're taking 16 and 17-year-olds out of the jail...
They're not taking them out of the jail. It's not retroactive.
Well, they will, they will be.
No, I, that's, that's the one nice thing about the law. I, I, he won't, not be opening up the jail cells and sending them over to Woodfield.
So, future 16 and 17-year-olds who would go to jail are now going here, right across the street from the jail.
Well, it's not actually right across the street.
On the same, on the same campus, yes.
I, I'll give you a story on how sensitive they are about that. When Sandy was ready to hit, we were making contingency plans that if something happened to Woodfield, where we would put the kids. So, our game plan was to put, we had an empty building at the jail, woman's facility was closed at that time. And the Commissioner at that time said we'd use that building if we really needed to. So, we sent that plan up to the state. The Attorney General sent back and said, no, you cannot put those children on that footprint. Let me tell you, that was Friday afternoon before the storm hit. If Woodfield went down, that's where they were going. I mean, I was not going to keep those kids, what am I going to do with them, you know, like that, you know, nobody else could take them. But that, that's just to give you an illustration on how sensitive they are about the sight and sound separation, you know, between the children and between adult infants.
But it didn't bother them it's on the same side as the jail?
No, no, it didn't, it didn't. It's okay. It could be in the Valhalla campus, but it's, it's on the other side. So, that's, you know, that's kind of a, you know, just a brief description. Now, there are other costs associated, obviously, with this legislation that are not related to detention. And that's, you know, a lot for the probation department. Because a lot of these kids that are 16 and 17-year-olds, you know, that get arrested on some of these minor offenses, normally would go for a hearing in the local courts and they would have something resolved in the local courts. They will all now be coming to probation for adjustment services. So, the estimate is that I will probably be seeing 1,000 more cases a year, you know, than what we normally saw. Because they're all, kid gets arrested on a minor offense, you know, the police officer will give, once the parents come to the police station and pick them up, they'll give the, the child an appearance ticket to appear at the probation department. department, so that we can look at the case and see if we can adjust the case, so they won't be going to criminal court anymore.
Where are your offices? Where are your offices?
We have offices in White Plains, New Rochelle, Mount Vernon, Yonkers. We're, we're located at peak scale, we have offices at peak scale, so we're all around with it.
How are we going to transport these kids to these farm, flown...
The sheriffs will do it in those, yeah. The sheriffs are, are responsible for transporting.
And so, what about, you know, the family visits and stuff?
Well, that's, that's the one, that's the one big benefit that we get in Westchester by having the facility in Westchester. You know, families and attorneys, you know, can, it's, it's a lot easier for our folks to be able to, you know, see, see the children, because the, the facility is located in Westchester. Now, it's worked out fairly well, you know, for the Ninth Judicial District, you know, they have visiting on the weekends, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so families come down on the weekends and they can visit, you know, visit. But that's, hey, look, I, I would...
And possibly...
You know, someone asked how long the kids are going to be staying. The, the one change in the law that's really going to affect the number of bed days that are going to be utilized, you know, by children, is that the law allows now for a child, if they receive a sentence of a year or less, they can actually serve it at Woodfield. That's new in the law.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
They can serve at Woodfield?
They can serve it at Woodfield, yeah. So, they stay at Woodfield. So, Wood, right now, Woodfield...
That's going to crowd up?
Yes, yes. Well, that's why, when you look at the number of beds that we need to plan for, it's not with the old model that we're going to get a kid in, going to stay for a month, maybe two months, while we do a plan for the court with a recommendation on what should happen to that child. You know, we will be doing that, and also, the judge, if they decide to give a year on the adolescent cases, they would have to stay at Woodfield. So, that bed is going to be tied up for a year now, not just two months. So, it's going to be a little bit, so it's, you just can't look at what our pre-trial number is going to be, and this new post-trial number, I mean, it's just, it's a crapshoot right now on what, what the numbers are going to be. But I'm going to tell you that I think our judges, especially in Westchester, if they're going to consider a, a prison sentence or like, you know, a, a stay at Woodfield, they're going to order that they serve the sentence at Woodfield, because it's just going to be a lot easier, as you're saying, for families.
And then we, you'll have high school classes and things like that?
We'll have, yeah, we'll have, see, the other interesting thing that a lot of people don't realize is that right now at Woodfield, the educational programs, we pay for that 100% at a tax level, local tax level. We do get reimbursed by 49% from the state, from the Office of Children and Family Services, but we get no money from the State Department of Education for the educational programs for children at Woodfield. Now, when you went to the jail and you saw the program building that we built when we did the new penitentiary, all right, you have all those programs that get funneled by Northern Bo, by, by Southern Bozies, all right? That doesn't exist at Woodfield. We're hoping, we're not, still not sure yet whether the money that is appropriated for the 16 and 17-year-olds at the jail that the state pays for is coming to Woodfield. There's no commitment yet from the State Department of Education to have that money follow those children in the Woodfield. So, we're not sure whether or not, well, the state's going to pay one way or another. Either they're going to pay for it, you know, through the State Department of Education, or we're going to start charging the state 100% for the costs associated with the 16 and 17-year-olds, because that's what the law says. It's an educational cost for 16 and 17-year-olds. So, one way or another, they're now going to pay for the 16 and 17-year-olds. We're trying to get them to pay for the, for the JDS too, which is really, I, I can't fathom why the state of New York would not pay for educational services for children that are in Woodfield, not only in Woodfield, but in any, any, any facility in New York State. Doesn't make any sense.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I'm sure you, I'm sure you'll be back when you have a building to, to show us. Hopefully, you get a good architect.
That's, that's, that's the commission.
Um, okay, thanks again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any other business that people would like to bring up? Okay, see you all at Chapel Creek Crossing in September. Hopefully, it'll be a little cooler there.
Sidney, we're building, the air conditioning works better.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
I have a second. All favor.